Well, it's a little after seven o'clock, but we had had a meeting prior to this. At this time, we would like to call on regular Board of Commissioners needing to order for November 21st, 2016. We'll begin by, everyone please stand for the indication and the flag of allegiance. Commissioner, fill in your leaders and indication.
Lady God, we just thank you for the privilege of being able to gather freely in your courtroom tonight and conduct business of the county. We just hope that everybody will stop and remember this week is a week of Thanksgiving, which every day should be in our lives. This is a special time of Thanksgiving, and we just stop and count the minute blessings that we have, and hope that you will be with us now and guide us and direct us to conduct the business in the way that you would have it done. That's this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with thirty justices for all.
Okay, skip down. We have no amendments to approve at this meeting. We will approve those at our meeting in December. We amend the agenda adjustments. We do have one on the new business. We need to add number eleven, a date for meeting with Board of Education. Number eleven on the new business. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So, same.
Motion's been made in session. Are those in favor? They are?
Aye.
Or are they opposed? Okay, delegations. Do we have any unannounced delegations? Mr. Reiter.
I'm here tonight, my neighbor's Earl Ramser. Did you just think this fellow? Sunbury, North Carolina. And I'm here to make some comments for the record on, basically, it's on there, it's the school situation, it's middle school. And I've thought about this for quite some time. And the difference between, we have two members of the board who've been in private businesses and have run their business, and all the rest of y'all have been bullied by the state and federal government, so, and we got a very reputation. But I'll say it real quick, how things get done. I don't get done. Sunday week ago, Saturday week ago, Gates County's largest farmers have a combine break down. And so they called a mechanic up, which is my nephew, and said, "That one broke down, I need something." So my nephew went online Sunday morning, said, "We got a problem." Said, "I can't find one nowhere in the country, everything is back ordered." But he found one in Delaware. So he called the farmer back up and said, "I got a emergency number you can call in Delaware." And so the farmer called that number Sunday morning, and the man called him back and said, "Yeah, I got your part." He said, "Well, can I have it?" He said, "If you got any money, you can have it." He said, "Well, I'm on my way. I'm going out the door to Delaware right now." So anyway, he headed to Delaware, got his part. It was drizzly rain that Sunday and Monday morning, but Tuesday afternoon, he was back picking. And the reason I say all this is just a little bit of illustration. I got thinking about this, this individual in the private sector made this decision, he was picking about forty, forty-five thousand dollars worth of soybeans a day, and going to Delaware and getting a part didn't mean anything to him. I got thinking about this, it's a government decision to be made, first of all, y'all had two board meetings, a public hearing, and then instructional to put it up to beds, and somewhere, perhaps April, I guess, we'd got the combine back in. But we all know that's the way government works, and most of us, and so we live with it. But thank goodness that everything is not on government. But the reason I bring this little story up is the fact that I know, well, everybody's got case combines, I go, go to ten, fifteen big farmers, maintain those, got equipment. They go over it before they pick wheat. After they pick wheat, they go over it and fix everything, for corn, after corn, soybeans. Of course, it keeps breaking down. The point I'm trying to make here, and hope I make it, is the fact that the private sector out here, the good, big farmers look after this equipment. They don't sit out there and say, "Well, we'll get around to fixing this three or four years from now." Maybe they don't know it gets fixed. But maintenance of equipment and buildings is very important. And I was just making this observation that I could never figure out yet, and maybe somebody y'all can help me somehow, why did our central middle school get all these so-called problems and not being maintained? And that's a question that I think you as the Board of Commissioners need to find out while this happened. But my number one thing here is trust. And I think this is a part, we have a point right now, is a lack of maybe communication, but trust between the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners. I was telling Linda the other night, watching the Netflix program, The Crown. Well, when Queen Elizabeth II was a young teenager, she had to go be taught the constitutional government of England. And so in the program, she had taken notes. And this tutor was teaching her about, there had to be trust between the Crown and the government and the church. The Archbishop of Canterbury, of course, always based with big role in England and Great Britain, there had to be trust between these three groups. Well, one of the FDR says that he thought the greatest man that ever lived was Winston Churchill. And I've studied him, got books all along, but I just want to throw that in. But Winston Churchill had a stroke. And Queen Elizabeth had become queen at twenty-four years old, and really, she was just thrown into it. She found out by accident. Churchill and Anthony Eden didn't tell them, they said, "Let's keep it away from the Queen, this might bother her, let's don't tell her." So Queen Elizabeth found out about it. So she asked one of her advisors, you know, "What should I do?" But in the meantime, she remembered, she had this little book, but she was like thirteen years old. And she would've got that book out, and she had trust, underlined it, trust. So in the end, she had to call in Winston Churchill and Eden, and she'll know, really, basically, they had to understand it. And Winston Churchill graciously said, "Your Majesty, I made a mistake, I'm sorry." But it is important to have trust. Now, we don't always have trust, but we got to build trust that we're going to do anything to get this school system's situation settled. Because if voters voted, hopefully, that part was settled, but the mayors haven't been settled. We still got to work on that. And I would hope that down the road, that we would build some trust between you two groups. And right now, honestly, as a citizen who follow politics more than I wish I ever saw, I wish there was more trust. But we cannot, this is something that I really am serious about. We have had people in the school system talking about how bad that school was, how bad that school was, is, I should say, I don't use the word, is or was, is. Well, this is not good. We got people out here going around and publishing in papers about things like lead, paint, and asbestos, and have gotten the people in the county, some of the people, thinking that the school is unsafe for their children, which is not true. And somewhere down the line, somebody needs to do like Queen Elizabeth had to do Churchill, somebody down the line should have to come in and say, "Look, we can't keep doing this. We've got to work within the system and get it to work." And I said that somebody, all of you, Linda, of course, is the champion, but let's put her a diss in it. But we do have to make a strong case that two things. Number one, that I'm in favor of is fixing the school, if it needs fixing. Obviously, it needs work, because nobody's been fixing it. Number two is that we should have a plan when you go into this meeting. Now, this is all me talking, and I'm sure none of y'all are going to really pay attention, but I'm trying. I already got one laugh, one smile, but I've been to these meetings with the school board and the commissioners before, and when I leave, nothing really seems to me as ever been accomplished. And before y'all meet with the school board, you should have a purpose, and they should have a purpose, and when you leave, something should be accomplished. You might as well stay on and watch Netflix. So go in with a plan. Now, the end results of all this, Natalie and I had a conversation, and I didn't fully understand what I understood. But anyway, she was explaining, I was talking about, we as a county own the buildings, and it's up to us to maintain the buildings. There seems to be a little bit of discrepancy here, is who's in charge of doing it. Now, Pastor Dan Kennedy, and I had a bid to settle the meetings, when they put a new roof on the schools over there, including five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars for Northeastern, it was the county commissioners that decided to do it. The county commissioner had to vote the money. And so I think somewhere down the line, we're going to fix up the middle school and make it presentable and safe, that you, the commissioners, are going to have to not dump out some money and not know where it's going. We're going to, y'all all know what I'm talking about, I've already talked to many of them. Where the money is, is where the power is. Isn't that true? Where the money is, is where the power is. And you are the only group of people in here that can tax us, get money, and look after it. For the record, first of all, I have never, and I read newspapers more than most people, I love newspapers, I'm old-fashioned. I was reading three a day, now I'm down to two a day. I have never seen a newspaper, this is the Gates County index, that run a front page editorial in the center of the paper. I mean, I'm just shocked that Cal Brown would do that, because it's just not acceptable normally. But I look in here, and it says, of course, this is coming from Superintendent Williams, talking about the safety of the school. And he says, "He has made fact-based presentations." Fact, all of these presentations were not based on facts. I think we all could agree with that. We got things that are just speculative. Well, what really caught my eye, he says, in here, now, when this whole thing, and I know y'all talk to a lot of citizens, maybe more than I do, when this whole thing got started, people would come to me, matter of fact, Sandy was still with us then, and I saw her, I said, "Where's all of this so-called grant money that I'm hearing about?" Which I already thought I'd do to answer, but she told me, and I think Heather told the same thing, "There is no grant money." Well, here, last week's index, we must return, now this is right here, we must return the six million dollars, and I got this circle, given, given to Gates County. Now, if this is based on fact, I'd like to know where that six million dollars that was given. But it's up to y'all, I am tired of it, I think that we can raise some taxes to fix that school, I'm a hundred percent in favor of fixing it. The roof can be fixed, the plumbing can be fixed, I've never seen anything that couldn't be fixed. And let's move forward, Jack. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reiter. Okay, next up is Chuck Ross.
Good evening, Commissioners and County Manager, Chuck Brothers, 285 Drumfield Road. I'm going to echo some of the same sentiment that Mr. Churchill, Reiter, just talked about. And, but, some of my comments come based from going to the meetings and talking to individuals, and talking to Cal Brown about that article that was in the paper, and a couple of things. And one thing I asked Cal was, "Why haven't you guided the other side of the story as to why fifty-six percent of the people voted no?" "Well, you give me some names, and I'll run an article." Well, I'm going on record tonight to tell you that myself and four other prominent individuals, citizens of this county, were the ones that sponsored the vote no referendum signs. And the reason that they sponsored those signs was for a number of facts, or a number of feelings. Number one, they felt that the referendum had been somewhat, quote-unquote, shoved out of my throat in a short-time fashion. Secondly, another comment that came along with it was, "I've never seen anything that couldn't be fixed." And the third thing, and I think the one that kind of sticks in a lot of people's mouth is, "If we spend sixteen million dollars to build a school, what are we going to do with the high school in Buckham that are within the same timeline of construction?" That was three of the major bullet points. But I went to one of the information sessions at TS Cooper, and one of the Board of Education members stood up and made this broad statement, "We've exhausted every means that we have to find money to fix this school. There is no other money." On November the first of 2016, in the Hampton Rose section of the Virginia Pile, on the front page, there was a little thing that caught my eye, it says, "Portsmouth, Virginia." And we've got a lot of people who live in this county that are from Portsmouth. Portsmouth gets $6.1 million bond. So I turned to page three, and the headline of the article is, "No More Drippness Ceilings For Three Portsmouth Schools, Thank To Federal Bond Program." And that is somewhat a hundred and eighty degrees contradictory to the fact that there is no more money. "We've exhausted everything we've got to fix these schools, there is nothing." Sandy may know this, because this information, and this goes along with what Earl was saying, you know, factually and fundamentally, this comes back to the Board of Commissioners to make this happen, to fix the school. This information that was quoted in this didn't come from this city of Portsmouth's school system, it came from the Chief Financial Officer. And the city secured a $6.1 million in qualified zone academy bonds, or QZABs, which provide interest-free financing for renovations or other improvements. The lender receives a federal tax credit in lieu of interest. Well, that's a lot of money. We've been hearing that it was going to take, what was it, over two million dollars to put the roof on one school? This is kind of what we were talking, or hearing. The bonds will pay for new roofs at Brighton Elementary School, Woodrow Wilson High School, bleachers at Churchland Middle School, and William Waters Middle School, and heating, ventilation, and air conditioning upgrades at Churchland High School. Wilson will get a new public announcement system as well. So this goes back to one of those bullet points that I just brought up earlier by one of the four people that sponsored these signs, was, "It can be fixed. There's money out there that can be got." Now, one of the caveats to getting this money is, the QZAB bond comes with a number of stipulations. Recipients must find a private entity to contribute at least ten percent of the bond's value. Enter into a contract worth at least ten percent within six months of its issuance, and spend one hundred percent of the money within three years, and only certain kinds of projects are eligible. But one of the things that qualifies the bonds, and I think Gates County is still a tier-one county, I think that survey you sent me still puts us in a tier-one, was that to get this, that in the state of Virginia, you had, a certain percentage of your population had to be below the property level. Well, I would think that a tier-one county in North Carolina would certainly qualify into that. So I'm going to, this is certainly a rebuttal to the comment that came out of the Board of Education. There is money available, how long they work on getting this is beyond me. Maybe you know how long stuff like this takes, I don't know. But they got it, they found a private entity to help offset the ten percent cost, which was $610,000. But the number one thing that I want to impress upon y'all about it was that I took a tour of that school. I went to Sexton's, or it's called Gates Food Mart now, and a teacher walked in who I've got a tremendous amount of respect for, and we got to talking about the school. And she said, "Why don't you go down there and get a pass and get a tour?" So I ate my lunch and went on down there, and got with the principal, and he walked in, and there was a few things that Dr. Williams had pointed out in his presentation that I wanted to see for myself. Number one was the electrical panels that were in the hallway, what really is the issue there. The second biggest name was the room that has the mold in it. We opened the door, and he asked the principal, he said, "You can really smell this, it smells like a musty old ice to me." I said, "I don't know." I said, "Obviously, it's not too big of an issue, you've got an office to the right of this room, and you've got a schoolroom to the left of this room." I said, "If there's an issue, I would think the problem migrates." But two things that really caught my eye the most in Dr. Williams' presentation was the utility room, or the locker room, or storage room that they use for the football. And this goes back to something Earl had said, you know, "What has happened to the maintenance?" Well, I was shown that lean-to is all it is, for any of y'all that want to go see it, it's nothing more than a lean-to. And the principal said, "Well, you know, you can see daylight." I said, "Well, you know, I would think that you would," and a lean-to. I said, "This is all that it is." But what caught my eye, he shut the door, and the one-by-four faceboard that was on the top caught my eye. I took my finger, and I poked my finger right on through, right on up to my knuckle, rot. He said, "Are you a contractor?" I said, "No, I'm just observe things." I said, "I just want to ask you this one question." "What is that, Mr. Brothers?" I said, "How long has, you think that board's been rot?" "Well, I don't know." I said, "Well, it looks like it's been rot long enough that somebody's painted over it." I said, "How do you paint over a rotten board without replacing it?" Second thing that I wanted to see was the boiler room. There was a comment that was made about the floor and the diesel in that room, and the diesel that was leaking, so I asked to see the room. He opened the room up, principal was first, the maintenance guy was second, and I asked, I said, "What is wrong in here?" The maintenance guy said, "Nothing that I know of." I said, "Well, why are we being told that the boiler room has got issues?" I mean, I said, "If you got a diesel leak, I said, "Where is the oil drive?" Jack, you know, most shops got oil drive somewhere, not a bag of oil drive anywhere. So in the end, we walked through, and the principal, who I forget his name, asked, he said, "Well, Mr. Brothers, have I showed you enough to convince your mind to vote yes on the referendum?" I said, "To be quite honest with you, no, sir, you have not." I said, "You've not shown me anything that I couldn't see and find it couldn't be fixed." I said, "Matter of fact," I said, "we're looking at the new wing. Double doors in the back corner of the new wing has got a metal lintel across it. And it had rained enough that that lintel had started to rust, and the rust was running down the wall." But what caught my eye was the bricks had separated from the mortar joint, and the bricks had cracked where that building had settled them, big enough you could stick your finger in it. I asked the question, I said, "How long you think that's been cracked?" "Well, I don't know, Dr. Williams probably hadn't seen that." I said, "Well, somebody's got to see it." I said, "Why wouldn't you be proactive and try to caulk that and do something with it to keep the moisture from getting behind that wall? I don't know, I've only been here ninety days." So I'm like Earl, the referendum speaks for itself. I voted no for it. I'm one of the five that bought the signs to put up. There was a lot of people that were disenchanted with the way that it went about. They fundamentally didn't think that we could afford out of debt, knowing that other schools were going to be dying to pike. But the biggest thing that I heard was, "I've never seen anything that couldn't be fixed." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brothers. And Marsha Parker.
Hello, Marsha. Parker, from Zion Road, Sunbury, nineteen seventy-five graduate, Woodrow Wilson High School, and substitute teacher, student of just the public school system. You know, I was listening to Paul Brown tree, Mr. Brothers. But you know what? I may be a little ignorant or illiterate, but a council cannot do anything without the backing of the county. Honestly, look around this room. And I know there's more people in Gates County, North Carolina, Sunbury, and all, that should be sitting here tonight, who really wants this so-called school. I thank God that you're the governor, Ron. And I'm reading the paper, y'all, for kindergarten, kindergartens are the foundation, it's kindergarten. So if you can't find a kindergarten, I'd like to know how many people are in these elementary schools and everything? Is Gates County or Sunbury, is it doomed? I'm going to go in the school system and find out action. What are you building for the future? How many young people are here that we're going to be building for in the future? With everything, door closed? County commissioners can't do anything with no backing, there is nobody around here. And then they're going up the revenue, I'm here, I said, "Go to the school," but then, because I didn't want to be in a situation, okay, revenue. So we want to be taxed to them, because the schools cannot be built, pretty much, because my taxes went up. So I'm looking at the revenue. Look around, y'all people, look around. Where are the people to support Roundtree? Where are the people to support you? Where are they? And then you come jumping on, I thought about it, about, y'all are here commissioners, how can you, I mean, they don't have anything to work with, that's how I feel. Not that I don't want a commission board, but the commission board do not have anything to work with. We had a situation with the stone. Thank God for the ore. I was out there getting my ore. But thank God, I looked at the ore that was around here, the sheriffs, everybody standing out and handing up, where are the people that helped the sheriffs? Sitting home trying to get their ore. I mean, my God, I just look around this place, this place can grow, can really grow, can rent it, if they have the Chinese restaurant open yet?
Yes, ma'am.
Where are people? That's the problem. I agree with Roundtree, I agree with you. Where are your backing? You stand here, y'all who stand here, you speaking for whom? Where's the majority? Because you're just a minority like me. That's the main problem here. So we get taxed to them. You blame the commissioners not doing anything? Well, if they can have six million dollars, I don't put nothing out there for them. I mean, if I have six million dollars of rent to give, why would I put something out and we don't have no backing? And I'm watching things going on in this county. My husband, I built our house on faith. Where are the people that helped us? Coming from Virginia, Southern Virginia, walking out here with nothing, paying for property, a property paid for. The home paid for, people, y'all, like, who just used, the homes paid for. I don't be taxed to them, just paying taxes, and I don't have a mortgage, or somebody come take my house because my taxes new hat. So I don't have any beef with the council people, first and after, there's nothing in here. I can count the little bit, a handful of people in here. You can't buy Roundtree, but Roundtree can't do it. He can't do it. I said, "No," because everybody wants to see proof. One thing about Roundtree, proof is in the pudding. We want to see before we put our little bit or whatever in there. So we don't have the backing, just look at, we don't have the backing. I wouldn't put nothing on, if I put a mission out, they're going to go over there and go to sleep, honestly. Because the same, we're getting older, and the people who stand here long, we are old. But a lot of people, we are older, and we're not doing nothing. But along the way, we are older, and we're not doing nothing. Where are your children at now? Why don't you bring these places for the children that's in the school system? That's what you should do. Bring all the children and tell them, "You don't listen to the children. Hey, they're the children in the school system." Purpose I missed. See, I'm dealing with drug addicts, I'm dealing with drug people. I've got a thought instead of going to Virginia for drugs, put my life on the line, within the news. So, you need to get your people in here. We need to get people in here before we start wanting the board.
Mrs. Parker, oh, you're not addressing the board.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was addressing the people. Not that y'all don't exist, but what can y'all do when you're looking out here? And we are short to the next meeting, and we are short to the next meeting. Nothing is not going to happen, Mr. Rowan Tree. People not even interested in what you're talking about. Because if you had to peep in the people, and any of their inner world would have something to work with, then they would listen. The people have spoken in this election. The people have spoken, but they didn't do what they were supposed to. I won't. The people have spoken. Y'all get people in here next meeting. If you can't get your children in here, do what you have to do. Here, this rung, and then maybe y'all get some help from where y'all need help from. I spoke to a woman up here earlier, and she asked, "How many children is in the New York Child's Class?" She said, "About a hundred and thirty, is that good?" Thank God I raised my children. They might be going in the right direction. But I know what direction you're going to. Y'all, this county could have been out, y'all could have been done something. We just, y'all just don't have the people supporting you, on family, setting their own household, who's not supporting them. Don't come up here and get some, I won't come back again. I said, "I want to speak tonight." But give them something really to work with. Because if the multitude came out, you'd get what you want. The board, I don't have to go after board. Board, board, this room is not filled up enough for them to really do anything. So, that's all I have to say. Sorry, I came off as harsh, but that's how I am. I'm the type of person. Yeah, you got a bag in the police department. You got a black bag of board. You got a bag each of them. This work on the part, y'all.
Thank you, Mrs. Parker.
Okay, I believe that takes care of everyone who has signed up to speak. Okay, moving on to the next item. There is a nice delegation, snow industry appearance, and a couple of hearings. We did have one issue under whole business. If you remember, Joe Felton came up at our last meeting. That presentation of by a change in Bill seven, seven zero, and he has answered us to...
Would like to know how the commissioners stand and if you support his stance.
Why does the board?
First, Madam Chairman, I support what Joe Felton brought up here on this last meeting. And I do so because it seems to me that if this bill is left like it is, it's watering down the enforcement of a lot of our building codes. And I feel like the building codes are of that whole purpose, and they need to be adhered to rather than ignored.
Madam Chairman, I too would like to voice my opinion on that, if I may. I had an opportunity to speak to Mr. Felton and others involved in inspections. And it appears that seven seventy may be coming from some vindictiveness in another part of the state. So, got a real strong feeling, and they told me directly about that. So, I certainly in support of Mr. Felton's proposal.
Okay, well, is someone willing to make a motion?
I will make a motion that we write a letter of repealing this Bill seven seven. Now, second, I motion out here.
Okay, motion's been made. As I meant, if you have a lot of support of changing Bill number seven seven, any discussion?
Yes. You know, I certainly feel that Mr. Felton's opinion is credible, certainly committed benefits to it. I think what we don't see is what prudent discussion was from the state level on how they reached this decision. While I am not opposed to sending a letter, I would think that the letter should be in the form that the board commissioners acknowledge the deceit of Mr. Felton's letter and his contentions with problems with Bill we proposed. That we request that the House of Representatives give consideration to the request based on what is most proven for citizens of North Carolina. In other words, the letter should be constructed in such a manner that, you know, we're not solidly saying that the bill has its value, certainly we want to reconsider it based on his letter and come to a decision that was proven for citizens of North Carolina. That's the way I would like to see it, the letter.
There are concerns with the way the bill is written, I mean, there are concerns with the bill that we would like to see addressed.
Exactly. The review process, you have to come out with a decision on how to move forward based on what's most proven, and certainly if Mr. Felton has laid out that as written, it's home for the majority of citizens of the county, and it should be reviewed.
A question I have might direct to Natalie. Certainly, we can send the letter to my representatives, but other departments, like Department of Insurance, that we should send a copy to, or...
Or you can send it to the legislature if you want to ultimately tell them what you can change. Mr. Joe Felton said last time, he has talked to the people at the Department of Insurance, and they said they have to enforce this.
And I notice on this letter that he addressed it to Representative Hunter, Senator Cook. Both bills is on compromise and United States Representative. I would not think that we need to send a letter to him.
No, he's on that one.
But if he's on that one, that we would need to send it to the two representatives here. Mr. Felton, would you, in your motion to a lot of support, would you entertain the concerns or the proposal of Commissioner Jordan? Okay, so, what is before us is to write a letter of support with concerns about Bill seven seventy, that we have some concerns with the way it will, that citizens across the state...
And acknowledge the deceit of... I notice there's a little bit of concern always. This bill concerns doing away with a lot of the inspection follow-up. A lot of things that contractors are being able to do, plumbing, electrical, or whatever. The follow-up inspection is not going to be required. They will be free to do what they want to without anybody following them.
Certainly, no checks and balances.
I can't, I can't understand why y'all are saying the bill number.
Seven, seven.
If I may, it affects, it changes the wording of General Statute one fifty-three, A dash three fifty-seven permit.
I had to get that later. I ain't that smart.
And it sets a new threshold for how much repairs must cost before you do certain inspections. Like previously, if you put on a new roof, just for using an example. If it didn't reach a certain dollar threshold, you didn't have to have, or you had to, wait, I'm going to get it straight. Maybe if you put on a new roof, you had to get a reinspection. But now, if you have a certain dollar threshold, you know, if it doesn't, if it's not over...
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred dollars.
No, if I can read it, it's not fifteen hundred, it's fifteen thousand. Now, it says, "No permit issued under Article nine or nine C of General Statute, Chapter one forty-three shall be required for any construction, installation, repair, replacement, or operation performed in accordance with the current edition of the North Carolina State Building Code and costing fifteen thousand dollars or less in any single-family residence or farm building unless the work involves any of the following: the addition, repair, or replacement of load-bearing structures; however, no permit is required for replacement of windows, doors, exterior siding, or pickets, railings, stair trays, and decorative porches, and exterior decks; the addition or change in the design of flooring; however, no permit is required for replacements, otherwise meeting the requirements of the subsection that do not change size or capacity; the addition or replacement or change in the design of heating, air conditioning, or electrical wiring, devices, appliances, or equipment other than light counter replacement of electrical devices and lighting fixtures; use of permit materials not permitted in the North Carolina Residential Code for one or two family dwellings; and the addition, excluding replacement, of roofing."
So, to put it just condensed and make sense, if it's not over fifteen thousand dollars, and it does not involve load-bearing repairs, then you work without having those inspections. But with the exception of the caveat that was made, so, there is a threshold where before you had to have inspections regardless.
But it did not do away with the initial permitting requirement.
Yes. If it costs less than fifteen thousand dollars.
There's not a way to exclude those load-bearing inspections.
So, what it would do is would open the door for John Doe, shade tree plumber, come in and do some repairs on the house that I purchased seven years later, and then find out that's good, get rid of fault.
Okay, it's clear. Everybody is clear on what we're voting on? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I would direct pain now to Whitey Lane.
I'm curious.
Yes.
I'd like for County Manager to send an email to Cook and Mr. Hunter, asking them for their opinion and how they intend to vote, or how they intend to persuade the vote to be taking place on that bill. Danny's already...
It's already passed. This is the new bill. They took a bait this year.
They took a bait, is that already there? I didn't realize that, or to repeal.
Yeah.
I didn't realize that. Wow. Madam Chair, I want to know how they look.
Well, that's not a top record.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to our revenue rule nine, new business. A informant of interim finance officer. If you know from the memorandum that was in our notebook. It is prudent to have someone else be able to sign for a variety of reasons in case the finance officer is away or in awe, and we do not currently have one. Our finance officer, Ms. Pittman, is recommending Mr. Runcree, the county manager, be appointed as the interim finance officer.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we honor the recommendation of our current finance officer and appoint Natalie Runcree as being the interim finance officer. Second, I motion.
Motion's been made. Second, any discussion?
Yes. I just want to make the comment. Hopefully, we're not overloading our county manager. Right now, as far as I'm aware, we do not have a planner. She's taken up the responsibilities of planner, finance officer. Of course, what we designate her to do is have authorization to approve and sign various financial documents. But in addition to being county manager, we're really putting a lot of responsibility on the county manager. You know, we may not, probably, we're not in a position to do anything else right now, but I just want to make the board aware that if you continue to add additional responsibilities on that position, certainly it makes it more difficult to carry out the responsibilities that the position calls for. So, I'm just want to be aware of that. I'm not opposed to it, certainly. I don't know what county manager is attached to try to move forward. I know we've advertised for the job. We'll have the advocates we have, but certainly we're adding quite a bit to the position currently.
Yeah, that was not only a concern. I know possibly we do not have a planner right now. That is increase your workload, and this will increase your workload too, to that is a concern. Hopefully, we can find some people, but the right person.
Would County Manager like to comment or would you say?
There are no one with that finance can do this because of separation of duties.
So, what kind of a break?
It was choice, but at the same time, you know, we've got recognized that we need to move forward and try and get some replacements in.
And I certainly, I certainly agree with Commissioner Jordan as well. We had designated County Manager just standing in the seat previously.
Correct. Okay, is there an additional session? All those in favor of making Natalie Runcree the county manager, I am for the finance officer. Indicate if I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? But now, you got a new job, but no pay raise.
It's effective December tenth, or the year.
It could play the Jordan fortune.
I think that needs to be clarified in your motion.
So, it's put zero nine December, or do we have to put a date?
Yeah, I will make it December ninth, or ten, December ninth, if you want, I'll say.
Okay, December ninth, twenty sixteen. Will you agree to that amendment? I think we need to vote on this for legal purposes, that we put the date of this appointment to be effective December ninth, twenty sixteen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Okay, a resolution to support the upgrade of US Highway seventeen in Northeast North Carolina to Interstate standards. That, we've seen the signs, we go to Lister City, I eight seven. We've all, I don't know how long that will take to become a reality. But anyway, they would like a lot of support. This comes from...
This one is from Camden County, and I do know that Pastor Taint voted at their meeting, their first meeting in November, and voted to support this. I do not have the language of the one Pastor Taint. This is what Camden was going to discuss today.
Of course, seventeen runs through Camden and Pastor Taint, does not run through this county.
They send it to all ten counties with Alamo Law Commission, and it does not run through six of the ten counties. However, in many cases, just as a kind of a background, the counties tend to support each other. So, it's kind of one of those, if you'll help me with this, maybe they can help us later with another project. But that is at the discretion of commissioners.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we support or adopt a resolution to submit for the upgrading of the US Highway seventeen in Northeast North Carolina to Interstate standards. Second, I motion.
Motion's been made, and second, if you look in your notebook, you see the resolution that was, um, done, and, um, the one that we have for us was...
This one is, is our, we had updated with our information.
By information. Um, and all of us have read through it. I don't see any problems with the wording, and, um, is any part of discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of a resolution to support the upgrade of U.S. Highway seventeen in northeast of North Carolina to Interstate standards, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Um, uh, so, moving on, Personnel Board recommended turn over to the county manager.
Personnel met first meeting in November, and if you'll make reference to the second memo that was distributed to the Personnel Committee, whenever we voted, the commissioners voted, I believe it was at the November meeting, to actually change the facilities technician or the position description, we did not change his salary, and that was a discussion, and we said, no, it did not include the salary change. However, as I was updating some information for the USC School of Government's salary study, I realized that that was incorrect, there shouldn't have been a salary change associated with that title change and move in position. And Personnel Board made the recommendation to classify the facilities technician to a grade twelve step one effective January first of two thousand seventeen.
I'm, Chairman. I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation of Personnel Board on that.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, a motion has been made, and second, to accept the recommendation of Personnel Board, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Firefighters relief fund board appointments. You have in here, um, and we do all these at one time. Um, I will read those. For the summary volunteer fire department, they are recommending John Taylor Puchel and Daniel Bright be appointed to that, um, fund. From the Gatesville Fire Department, they're recommending Webster Harrell and Col, Col and Ryan. From the Hoppsell Fire Department, they're recommending Ronald Taylor and Al Haas. From the Gates Fire Department, they're recommending Merlin Harrell and Ronnie Parker. And from the U.R. Fire Department, they're recommending Billy Felton to be on, to be appointed to the firefighters relief fund. Do I have any motion?
So what do I have, Chairman? For each and every fire department?
Second.
Motion's been made, and second, any discussion? These are appointments that we make periodically.
The regulations changed this year. We made this not too long ago, but we got a, a message from Melissa that the, the regulations had changed. This fire relief fund, it's to, it's a board that, very fortunately, we've never had serve. Its purpose is to conduct a, a hearing, if a fireman is killed on the job, killed on fire, then we need to try to obtain the funds for him, and so far, we've all had used, that's what it is. And the term limits were changed, and that, that's the purpose of this.
Is, is it somewhat indefinite now, standing, if I remember correctly?
Yes, so these...
So, was it every year or every two years?
Right, it was every other year, and they have changed it this year, so that these appointments are indefinite. The only time you'll have to vote again for these is if there is a change, so now they can serve indefinitely. And we do get funding, I believe each of those departments gets funding each year. At one point, the checks are running through the finance office. I think they're transitioning finally to an electronic payment, and part of this board, if I'm not mistaken, their responsibility is to manage those funds and to make sure that they're there if something does happen.
Yeah, those, those funds just sit there, they sit there and grow.
Which is wonderful.
Since the year.
Right, that's what we want them to do, forever.
Where's the money coming from? Where's our funds coming from? Where did you make it?
You'll have questions later.
Okay, um, the motion is before us to approve the individuals from each of the five departments. Uh, it's been, motion's been made, and promptly second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Next one is surplus request.
That form, uh, Ms. Lawrence wanted to get that, so we can look it back, but it was to surplus, it was a request from the Sheriff's Office to, um, settle a gun to Marcus Burrow Police Department, an amount of two hundred dollars, and on the form, it does reference the general statute.
Sheriff Hathaway, do you have anything to say about that?
Can you come up?
Yes, sure.
Now, the item in question is a bulletproof vest or concealment vest that goes underneath the uniform that was specifically fitted for a deputy that's no longer with us. And he's gone to Muggsboro Police Department, well, their police chief, Darryl Road called and asked me if I would consider selling that vest to them so that he would have some form of protection while he's going to do it. The vest is only, the life shift of it's five years once worn, and it's set that, I believe that last year, just a couple of months from being expired. We don't have a use for it here, Sheriff's Office, it was fitted specifically for him, and he wore it for me to hear, and nobody else here from wherever, so he requested or asked that we sell it to them, um...
Was it two hundred dollars? Is that the amount?
Yes, the amount was two hundred dollars, and we paid, I don't know what it was, but it's pretty much at the end of its life. And if he needs it, I say to ask him to put in a surplus for him, see if he asks for it.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you, Sheriff. Uh, thank you, Sheriff. Also, just to, just to mention, so the rest of us know a little bit, is that what happens so often is that they sit in a corner somewhere for years and years until they expire, or someone does leave, and has no use, so we give them back, uh, so it's a good, good move to get somebody out of there.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Thank you.
Uh, so moved that Muggsboro have opportunity to purchase that, not, Chairman, from his County Sheriff's Office, who they're also...
Motion's been made, and promptly second, any additional discussion?
Yeah, I'd like, like, to make, uh, note that, based on this General Statute, I don't have it in front of me, but it should allow the county to dispose of it to another local government office or a government entity without going through the bid process and all of the appetizers, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, so, uh, stipulations, you announce it and publish and bid, doesn't apply in this situation.
Okay. Okay, motion's been made, and promptly second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, and the next one is the special separation allowance. County Manager, Ms. Pittman.
We included in their packet the information concerning this special separation allowance that's required by the general statutes. The general statute, uh, referenced the governing body determining the eligibility and the governing body involvement, which is why we brought it to you all, that we really don't have a choice in this, and it's a formality, but we wanted you to not only be aware of it people, although, and also to approve it so that we have all of our bases covered. Um, the payments actually started last month, Ed Webb retired September thirtieth, so his first payment was received based on estimates at the end of October. The retirement system did not finish their calculations until the middle of this month, so he'll receive, this month, he'll receive the first payment for the correct amount, plus the small amount that was owed from last month, because we're using estimates.
Sheriff, Webb has received all the documentation that he should provide.
Yes, sir.
So when did he apply for this, or this?
No, sir, this is something that we have no choice, and when he retired, we knew this would have to be paid. Any law enforcement officer that leaves and meets the criteria here would have to be paid that until they're sixty-two, till they die, or till they take another government job, as outlined in that general statute.
I thought I saw someone in this, somewhere in this, that, uh, they applied, who they applied for. Obviously, I guess he did.
Oh, wait, it was discussed before he left us, multiple times.
So, we have, uh, this obligation for six years. Currently, I'll plead it would not need to be adjusted to some of that.
Yes, it will be, there's an, there's an amendment that will be in the similar packet.
Why do we think that it would be a non-fundamental cover for this?
Well, the funding is there, we just have to reallocate it because it would be a several line mile...
The salary to retirement.
Right, we're reallocated, we're not pulling from any, um, any additional funds, we're moving from part-time salaries to come with us.
And, um, the age of sixty-two is not the social security age, which is better for us sixty-two than...
The general statute says sixty-two.
The general statute says sixty-two.
And, uh, there's no benefit to it, whatever it to this, this is just an allowance because, uh, individuals serve as a law enforcement officer.
Like, it's when, when the, the officer's pass away, the, the one that stops, it says that in the general statute.
So, okay, any additional comments? Okay, all those in favor of, um, the, um, authorizing the special separation allowance, um, great, no, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so we approve that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're back to comments from...
No, 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 that's a date.
Okay, date for the Board of Education meeting, for a joint meeting between the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners. Um, if you look, uh, you know, the holidays are rapidly approaching, but I think we probably need to meet, um, with them. We have a meeting on the fifth of December. Remember, I mean, this time will be on the first Monday instead of Wednesday.
And that most likely will be either in the extension office or at the EIC building, because court is scheduled for that date.
Around regular time.
Yes, sir, ten o'clock.
So, um...
How come court meeting on that Monday?
Yes, sir, the general statute states that after election has to be the first Monday of December.
December the third. At ten o'clock, that, our first meeting.
Do that last day, do that tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
Do it every time.
And then we go back to the Wednesday?
Then we go back to Wednesday.
I have no point in all that Monday, but I guess I'll have to.
Um, what are, the Board of Education meets on Monday or Tuesday?
They meet on the fifth as well, they meet that night. And they, if you could just give three dates, I will check with the superintendent, he will give that to his board. He's our economy today, wanting to know what the dates were.
I would say that, uh, December first, seventh or eighth, I mean.
And are we talking about late afternoon or?
Depends up to you.
I haven't...
Can we shoot for four, at least? Four o'clock?
Okay, I have a problem with that.
First, first. Miss Hopple just stated she has issue with the first.
Okay, so eight.
Well, if it's at four o'clock, I probably wouldn't, I, I have a doctor's appointment, but, um, I should, hopefully, I'm not ideal. Um, let's, what, let's go Thursday, um...
You want to do it at five?
No, we'd, yeah, about four thirty.
Four thirty, on the first, or which one?
First. Do you have a first at four thirty? Um...
Our hats or theirs?
They've brought a new location, um, so we recommended here if there's not court.
Maybe on Thursday would not be court. Um, what about, um, December sixth, no, Tuesday, that's list of Jordan has. Yeah, I'll say, how about seventh? December seventh?
That's an option, then, first?
No, they, they would like three dates.
They, they want three dates.
Oh, okay, seven, eight.
Eight, well, once again, seven.
I'll put it in there, and he'll be clear after.
Yeah, that's right. December first at four thirty, December seventh, is, you want this four thirty, five? Do you want to go back to, um...
Or if you can only come up with two dates, I just, we also have to make a confirm that this is available, and I don't think there's court on the seventh.
What about eight?
No, I can tell you, I sent an email today, the head court date, so, uh, let's review that. No, court is the fifth, fourteenth, fifteenth, and nineteenth.
So we're going off of the first?
Do you want to catch you that week, this offers the, um, eighth? Or do you want to skip down and offer the thirteenth? No, or offer the, um, twelfth?
I've got to leave them.
First, seventh, and eighth. I mean, they're just looking for something that'll work, right?
Correct.
At four thirty, we can, then, fine, if we find, can't go much earlier. Okay, I don't, we don't have to have a motion or anything, that's just, um, to work with the Board of Education. Okay, movement, comments, citizens' comments? Anyone like to speak?
I wouldn't make a call in it.
Yes, sir.
But it has nothing to do with y'all, but I need to come through the microphone.
I think we can hear you.
I think so.
Oh, not Lauren, that we need to have a conference.
Well, I, I probably could, y'all could have during, and then I could say, well, I have to do, I wouldn't have to leave.
You need to exercise.
Well, yeah, I do, blood clots out my leg. Now, this doesn't have anything to do with you, it's just something I'm thinking about, and I might call each one of you personally, and ask your opinion, because y'all are all intelligent people, uh, you would think that y'all are so intelligent, y'all would always agree with me, but, uh, anyway, I don't know if you ever realized this, and I just realized it lately in the last few months. You know, our Supreme Court in North Carolina has a mandatory retirement age of sixty-five, and we lose a lot of good justices because sixty-five, and Linda can tell you now, is very young, and, uh, when she gets sixty-five...
Yes, please have that when I get sixty-five.
But anyway, the bottom line is, you know, we have no mandatory, and this is, Linda, I don't talk to her about this way, but all of you, we have no mandatory retirement for school teachers. And I found out that we have some school teachers that are teaching way and beyond their years, and we have no way, we get rid of our chief justice of the Supreme Court at sixty-five, and the only thing that I want to add, I'll call you up and ask you your opinion, do you think that we should have a mandatory law for school teachers to retire at a certain age? And I'm going to Raleigh and push that point, and, uh, I enjoy doing that, but, uh, anyway, I want to say... But anyway, I want to see, but I want, I just want to ask y'all their opinion, I'd get back to you. But I honestly looked at this situation and found out that we have some, a few teachers that don't want to retire. And things go over beyond them. I know people that are teaching 10 years older than I am, and I know that I'm too old to teach, that's all I want to say, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay, anyone else, comments? Yes, ma'am. Please come up to the podium, board.
I just want to know what's in order and what's out of order. Y'all spoke about the old business, that means when House Bill 77, when Mr. Roundtree spoke out, was that out of order? Because you said, well, when I spoke of something, maybe the old business is in order, that when he can speak out on the old business. Are we to speak out on the old business when you, when you try to explain that Bill 77? And I didn't know Mr. Roundtree made a statement sitting right over there, and then I was wondering, so you didn't say, well, you're out of order? So I'm wondering, what is order and what's not? When can you speak and when can you not speak?
General speaking, we try to be informal as, as much as possible, but when you spoke out, we were voting about whether to approve or disapprove something. You don't have a right to say anything about approve or disapprove. He had a question, I believe that he asked concerns the bill, what the number of the bill was. But when you spoke out, it was concerning, we were voting, we were about to approve a bill, and you can't do that.
About Elizabeth City, I wanted to know about where the funds came from for that fire relief thing, where would the funds be coming from? That's what I wanted to know.
Okay, the fire relief funds, I'll...
Exactly. They come from the Office of the State Fire Marshal. So they have funds already set aside for all that stuff?
I'm not sure, honestly, where they get the funding, but the checks come from the Office of the State Fire Marshal.
And it's not county revenue?
It's not county revenue. The county doesn't have anything to do, that it goes straight to those firefighter relief funds at the volunteer fire departments.
And the surplus is where?
The surplus is county-owned, the surplus is county-owned materials, where is that located?
I'm just trying to get understanding, and it's kind of, wasn't it given long, but like my husband said, you had to be here a little longer to understand things that's going on.
Well, like surplus, if something is, so we can't just say, oh, what a deficit, so I'll buy that. We, it has to go through a process. Anything that is county-owned has to go through a process, so a lot of times it goes, um, go down deals and you can, you know, it's put up later and sold.
Well, some of it is learning, babe.
Yes, ma'am, and it's a process so that you can't, let's say, there was a truck that the sheriff's department had, and they wanted to get rid of it, and one of the deputies said, well, I'll buy that for $100. It might be worth $500. It has to go up or be it. So that somebody can take advantage of their position to get something relatively cheap.
Okay, and back to that US 17 Highway, you, I was, the way I got it was that maybe they will support us in the long run if we support them.
Well, reciprocity you hope will occur. Certainly, we have always been interested in maybe 4 Lane 13 to Virginia Line, of course, Virginia, I think, they said they're not interested in 4 Lane 13, or maybe 4 Lane 158.
So what would happen if we didn't support them? They would, they would probably get whatever they want done, right?
No one, no one has a magic wand.
Well, and I spoke to someone in Eaton, and they were telling us, I was asking them about businesses here, and they were, they explained, we, we ought to come to them. This county comes to Eaton to do their business. We're never getting no business in here, we got to go to other counties, go here and suffer, got to go and suffer to get something, or Elizabeth City, this county will never get anything.
Well, businesses who are interested in coming to market research, they are very, they're not going to put a big investment anywhere without doing market research. One thing, our medium income generally is acceptable to them, that's fine. One problem we have is the number of cars that pass any given highway, they like especially restaurants, they like a certain traffic volume to go by there, front door each and every day, and we do not have those magic numbers on any of our highways, whether it's 13, 32, 158. Probably the best bet would be Sunbury where 32 and 158 intersect, but even that is not a large amount. And then the other thing is, they do the market research, and our market is fractured. People from Corpiet, from Hill, they go north to South. People in Hopsaw, Sunbury, they can go to Elizabeth City, so South is by the same distance. Ure could go to Husky or Franklin, Rennelson a lot of times to Franklin, Gatesville has a choice to go. And they do their research, and they know that, you know, most people in the county do shopping in all areas, and when they go to the doctor or when they go to do business, they do shopping while they're, or they're working there, they shop and come home.
So what's hoping up there at Restaurant?
Well, the restaurant, China King, those individuals also had a restaurant in Windsor that got flooded, and they're trying to get that back up and running because that was an established business, and now, and they're, you know, they're working, we'll, we'll come back, but that has slowed progress on ours because ours is a brand-new business. But we're hoping that as soon as they get their store in, in that Windsor, up and running, they'll be back here, they'll do some of the work themselves.
Okay, well, I just pray that Gates County don't remain stagnant like ours.
Well, we're hitting China King, and we've got a couple Dollar Generals and Family Dollar, and I would say that that helps us with, with all businesses, because they, if they have a good track record here, it might encourage all people to come. And my understanding is Dollar General and Gatesville were one of the top grocery stores in the region.
For its size.
For its size, so that certainly encourages all people maybe to take a risk. But you got to have a track record. And we're not setting on our hands, we are trying actively to do things, but people who got, who had, who have made the decisions and have the money in the businesses, they do their research too. And you got to meet their thresholds as well. But thank you for asking those questions, and hopefully we have answered those for you. Okay, we'll start with Commissioner's comments, I guess I'll start since I'm in all of them. You know, this week is Thanksgiving, we have many blessings to be thankful for, you know, what was it, maybe six weeks ago, we had Matthew come through the county, I think we saw some of the best of the county, had that point, people working together to help their neighbors. Certainly, we should have been thankful to our first responders and all the people who worked to restore services as quick as possible. We also need to be thankful that we can live in a country where we do vote for our leaders, they have not chosen for us. Everybody has a right to vote and express their opinion, that's how democracy works. Sometimes it goes your way, sometimes it doesn't, you accept the results of the majority and move on. And for that, and we hope for the, all leaders will make, do the best they can for all the people of the country and for the state and for the county. But I do hope all of you have a wonderful Thanksgiving, that you take time to thank like the blessings that you have, that your family and friends and your country and everything, and have a wonderful day. Thank you. I do want to have a personal privilege that we haven't mentioned, we have two churches in the last couple of months who are celebrating 150th anniversary, St. John's, AMP Design in Sunbury just celebrated 150, and New Middle Swamp is celebrating this weekend. They have both wonderful milestones, 150 years.
Wow. I didn't know that. Ms. Hopple took up everything there was in your comments. But again, thank you everyone for being here, for your participation, and comments from the podium tonight were documented and notes taken, and we'll see what comes of that. We do like when, when our folks come to the podium, that they've done their research, seems that that's an opportunity to learn more something, so we do appreciate the preparation from the podium. Hope everyone has a great Thanksgiving and thanks for being here, being a part of me.
I too thank everyone for coming and part of our commissioners' meeting. Thank you for all the input at the meeting and even some when we, we're not at least, but we need our citizens to be aware of what we're doing, because the decisions do affect you. You know, when we increase taxes, we pay those taxes, but you pay them as well, and all of us end up having to pay, so certainly your interests help us to know where you stand. I too wish everyone a happy holiday, Thanksgiving. I ask everyone to be mindful of the weather change, hot one day, next day you're about to freeze, but be mindful. And I do want to say one thing about the Board of Commissioners. The job of chairman is not as, as easy as it looks sometimes. It's like being a judge in a courtroom, that chairman is authorized by general statute to conduct a meeting, she has the full backing of the sheriff's department, that gavel is not there for just show. She hits it just like the judge hitting the gavel, so our chairman is, she's very patient, and I think she tries to be fair, but she does have control of the meeting, and that's what the chairman's job is, is to control the meeting, like the general statute says. I think you're on a good job, I think you probably delineated it in the chairman's event, but just be mindful that that is a legal position that has authority.
I too thank you for all of your attendance tonight and your participation, and I want to give a thank you to our new sheriff out there, he's sitting there, and I appreciate your presence in these meetings, and it means a lot. And Mr. Rainford and Mr. Brotherton left now, and I really appreciate all the work that you put in for the research you did and what you did, and I also have some of the same concerns that y'all voiced, and I have not voiced those here. And I want to give a special thank you to Sandy. Sandy has been here, I think, seven years?
Nine.
Nine years? And she has done a very remarkable, commendable job at fault everything I know, and I am sad to see you leaving, but I wish you the best.
I'll second that motion.
Third?
I thank all of you for being here, of course, but Commissioner Felton has, most all of our meetings indicated how many folks he had here from his area.
That's bull, we should stay quiet.
So tonight, I see the gates as I've numbered everyone else, and so I thank you all for being here. And now I can allow Commissioner Felton to bide on that. I want to thank, and I'll thank my fellow commissioners, all the department heads that are here and those that have been here and participated, but most importantly, your citizen participation. And we feel it, we hear it, but also those of you do the background work, and we see Mr. Rainford from time to time, and he's always done his background work, but we also feel it and know that many of you have, and you do not come to the podium, but we appreciate hearing from you, and we'll follow through with that. So again, thank you, and God bless you and God bless Gates County.
I just say, I think Sunbury, Corpiet is, it has to be the largest representation tonight in my district, and I really appreciate all of you for being here.
Mrs. George Mathis, a little better than I usually say.
It's hard to know sometimes where the lines are drawn, but... Okay, we do have closed session, but we need to go into it. I hear, I'll entertain a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318, a love and concern legal and personnel matters. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. We'll take a five-minute break and we'll... I will entertain a motion to come out of closed session.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and promptly seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. A motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.